Oh, come on.
All right, I would like to welcome everybody out to our City Council Work Meeting for October 28th, 2020. We will begin with a review of this evening's agenda. Are there any items that we need to make adjustments to? I'm taking that as a no, all right? Any future agenda items that the council would like to have added to a future agenda?
Mayor, I would request, I know it's been requested in the past, but we need to have the documentation that shows our indebtedness as far as money that we owe or that we've committed to pay on impact fees. And I just, when we had that lengthy discussion about the bond last time, and the way we're going to pay certain things off, I think it's just so important for us to really understand what we already are obligated to before we can make further decisions to say, we'll be getting this much money to help pay these things off, because I don't think we truly understand our indebtedness right now. So I think it's critical that we get that, so I'd like to see that on a future agenda with the information, so we can hammer through that.
Any other items? Okay, we will move on to item 1.3 Leadership Task List Review. Get that up on the screen, please. Any questions on this list? Is that the full list? Am I missing part of it, because it's... Any questions or concerns about the information you're seeing on that list?
No, but I will, I'm just, just for the consumption of the council, we have had our second meeting for the high-speed internet task force thing, moving along well, and that I think trying to bring in other experts that might bring more to the conversation. And ironically, on my way here, I was listening to the radio, and they were doing an interview with a gentleman from USU, because he's been writing quite a bit of research, I was going to tell you guys this, about, because of the Caseville issue, it's on the ballot there in Caseville, and so he's done a lot of study on that from, from USU, and I know we talked about other schools, but I'll give you his name, so we might want to reach out to him. And our idea is to try and continue to gain information from people who have already went through it, so we're not, every city has to reinvent the wheel, but that's kind of where we're at on that.
All right, thank you.
I was just going to say, don't know where, I mean, where it's most appropriate to ask for, but at least I know since we've talked about future agenda items, it's not really that, it's not currently on our task list, but it's probably more appropriate in here is just to maybe get an update on last night's activities within our community, make sure that, first and foremost, that our personnel are being taken care of, and secondarily, having appropriate information to, whatever it is to communicate out to our residents.
Chief, did you have, did you want to address some of that now, or later in the general meeting, or are you ready to do such? Okay, we'll make sure. Okay. We will give you an opportunity to do that during our general meeting. I think general meeting is probably more appropriate. Just want to have their, have an opportunity. All right, we will move on to item 2.1 Army Compatible Use Buffer Update. Heather Upshaw.
Hello, good to see you all in person, instead of on the computer screen. I just wanted to first thank General Smith and Paul Raymond from Camp Williams for being in attendance tonight as I update you on this wonderful program that we have worked with, worked with Camp Williams now for, well, close to 20 years, but on this program, over the last five. Do I have to wear this while I'm up here, do I?
No, I don't think so.
Next slide, John. Oh, I have the pointer. So, the A-Cub program was initiated in 2014 and submitted for approval in September of 2015. Just recently, Camp Williams amended the plan, and that was approved just this year in September. So this was taken from the A-Cub Plan Update. This just talks about the value of Camp Williams and the current investment that they have there at that facility. And between Camp Williams and Harriman City, our goal is to protect that investment, and this program has been a tool to be able to do that. So over the last four years, between A-Cub and REPI, we have received close to $18 million in funds. And as you can see, there's also a landowner donation of close to $13 million. This is a 25% requirement, so it's a 25% match that is required. And as you can see, we're well above the 25%. We've also received $650,000 from the state. This is through the West Traverse Community Partnership. And this is something that was new this year, so we hadn't received this funding until just this year. So with this funding, we have been able to purchase close to 1,500 acres on our hillside, which creates recreation opportunities as well as a buffer for Camp Williams. I love this map. As you can see, in 2015, we had quite a bit of open space, but as of 2020, this map was developed just in October, so this month, you can see the difference there in what we've been able to acquire through this program. And this is just an additional map showing the A-Cub and REPI funding and the properties there that have been purchased. So as we move forward, we have approximately 70 acres left on the Bluffs contract, so we anticipate being able to close that out next year. So we've been looking at other parcel and other properties that we think that would be a good benefit to the camp and to the city to purchase. So as you can see here on this map, the south end is Camp Williams' boundary. The Bluffs is all of this green that we have recently acquired to the east. So the parcels here in orange are properties that we have spoken with, and they do have an interest in selling. One of the questions I had for the council is, what we have done in the past is we have either received an appraisal and just paid for that, funded that, or we have done a contract with the app, and they have funded that, but we have required a review appraisal. As you can see, there could be quite a few purchases here as we move through some of these parcels. So my question is, would you still prefer a review appraisal for each appraisal that we get? That's been our policy in the past. So that's one question to think about.
What would be the benefit of not doing that?
Well, I think as you start getting appraisals, and they're all pretty contingent, or contiguous, I don't see the value changing that much, so we're probably just spending money, just, you know, to meet our policy that I don't think it's really needed. It's probably about $500 each review.
How often are we taking down property?
Well, with these parcels, just depending on how much we receive, but this year, we have received over $2 million, so with these kind of parcels, that could take down quite a few in, in a short time.
I personally would be open to doing a review on a interval basis. So doing a review appraisal once every, you know, so many days, you know, 90 days, or once every 180 days, or something along those, those lines. I think it's important that we continue to make sure that we are making sure that we're going through that process, but I also do see the value of not doing it in every single one of these little parcels that are right next to each other. But I'm one of five, so I don't know what the rest of the council thinks.
I don't know that that's really practical. I don't know that's how it works with real estate purchases, right? I mean, you want an appraisal for one property, it's for that property.
The appraisal, you mean?
Right.
So we would get separate appraisals for each property? The question is if we want to do a review appraisal on each property on top of that.
Right, for the trend, for each transaction. So my question is, on this map, all the yellow is one property owner?
He represents those properties.
So are we looking at an individual purchase for each one of those, or can those be lumped together? Same thing with the others.
So, we haven't got that far down the line. It depends if he gets sign off from each of these property owners to represent them, which I believe he has, but if so, we could do one contract, one appraisal for all of the yellow.
To me, it would be a way to simplify it, right? Especially if it's the same agent.
But if he's not able to do that, and we have to do separate contracts, again, we are required by the A-Cub program to receive appraisals on each one. So...
I think when we, when we put that policy in place, it was really a safeguard, right? To make sure that we're really being good stewards of public money. Yeah, it's, it's an extra cost, but I mean, that principle's still there.
You're saying it's $500 per parcel?
Approximately.
So we're looking at what, $10,000?
It's, it's $500 per appraisal.
Appraisal.
Whether that's one parcel or a bunch of parcels.
Yeah, the review appraisals are typically cheaper than a full-blown appraisal.
So we're looking at maybe a maximum cost here on what I'm looking at the screen of maybe $10,000?
And it is something that we can be reimbursed through the A-Cub funds, correct, Paul?
Right.
I believe we can be reimbursed if that's also something to consider through the A-Cub funds.
Personally, I think it's still good policy to make sure we're in line, and if it can, if it can encourage kind of combining contracts, then that's even better.
Well, and we have some other contracts that we are still trying to achieve, large properties. So I think being consistent helps in the future with those as well.
I wouldn't want to, I, I wouldn't want to put a strain on a, on a proposal or, or request or a deal that we're trying to work out because we're doing something differently, so I'm, I'm good with being consistent.
I just want to make sure your question is whether or not we should adopt a review appraisal.
So we have a policy already that we have been doing, where we do a review appraisal on every appraisal.
Parcel.
If we wanted to continue with that, with these smaller parcels, what's the question?
Have those review appraisals resulted in any change in purchase prices? Lower or higher?
Lower.
Then keep doing it.
Well, that was the question I needed to hear, Steve. Keep doing them, please.
All right. Do you have any other questions for me, or for General Smith, or Paul?
No, it's General Smith. Do you have anything you'd like to add or say? Please, please come if you...
Please do.
Please do, sir.
Listen, I appreciate this opportunity to just, to stand before you for just a few minutes. I believe we have an event scheduled to bring you out to Camp Williams and orient you to the, to the facilities and to the installation by air, and then further explain this program. So I won't take a lot of time in explaining it, we'll wait till that point. But just, just know how much we appreciate Harriman City. You guys have been phenomenal in helping us achieve some tremendous outcomes. We've been at this for five years, and between the federal funds, the state funds, and the, and the owner contribution, we've almost achieved about $53 million of transactions of properties with either outright purchases or easements, and, and that's a phenomenal success. We're, we're being recognized nationally for the things that we're doing. And so what happens is, as we get more stakeholders bringing money to the table, it, it actually helps us to get even more money and more support, because when the federal government program manager, when they see partnerships, and they see communities coming together to solve these problems, then they're, they're more apt to, to provide those resources to us. And so we couldn't do what we're doing without Harriman City, so thank you so much. And I look forward to seeing, hopefully, all of you city council members and whoever else is invited. I think Wendy's working that, that list, and we could talk more into detail and have a, have a great time of showcasing Camp Williams. So, thank you.
Hey, General Smith, one quick question. Can you just talk about, at least from your, your level and your side, what you're hearing in terms of continued funding of this program on the, at the federal level?
So, I'm glad you asked. So what we're working on right now, we're actually working on a new program, and it's called the Regional Conservation Partnership Program. And that will bring about $10 million of federal funds to the project. And that's through the Department of Agriculture's NRCS program. So we've already dipped our toe into that, into that pot through a transaction that we did on the southern border. We got 2.1 million. And so we also have been engaging some other organizations that could possibly bring some funding. So what happens is now, the Department of Defense, they, they see these, these stacking of, of resources, and so then they start to look at giving us more funding. So we've, right now, it's, it's an annual thing. We never know how much we're going to get annually from, from the A-Cub and the REPI programs. This year, Paul, I think we were told maybe 4 million. That's kind of upfront. And then usually, as the year goes on, they get more money that gets turned in, and they look at Utah, and they say, can you guys execute this money? And then we always, we always say yes, because of folks like you that's aggressive and looking at opportunities.
It's definitely staff.
And having, having projects in the queue, then they, they tend to distribute those funds that way. That's how, that's how the federal government works. Whoever could spend the money gets the money. It's kind of crazy. But, but we also want to give credit to the landowners. Landowners are phenomenal. Some of them are a little bit impatient sometimes, working with the federal government. And we could tell, I could tell you some stories about that when we get together again, but it's all about relationships and knowing how to call the right people. But, so, so to answer your question, so the state of Utah, this, this will be the third legislative session that we've asked for funding from the state through the West Traverse Sentinel Landscape Fund. The state's, the legislature's been great. They recognize the value of this program, and so we anticipate that we'll get some, some more money this year. This year, the state budget's really kind of wonky because of the COVID thing, but I know the governor and other state legislators, they, they see the, the need to preserve Camp Williams. And it also, it also, it's not just about Camp Williams. It's about the citizens of Utah and having some recreation opportunities. It's, it's really a win-win, because for us, it helps us to have a little bit of offset, so we can continue to train. But for your residents, it's an opportunity for open space and trails, and because the growth is just phenomenal. And so we want to provide the place to go recreate and enjoy the wildlife and everything else, so.
General, if you would do me a favor, I've had the pleasure of working with you for a couple of years now. Our residents don't necessarily, a lot of what they will hear is just that the camp is there, they know it's there. Sometimes they'll get a notice that they might be doing some artillery shots out there. Can you maybe just real quick explain to our residents the importance of, of having this compatible buffer zone, so that you guys can continue to operate in the way that you need to?
Yeah, so Camp Williams is the only place that we have to train. We, we can go to Dougway for certain things, but because of the tight timelines of our training days, Camp Williams is perfectly located for all the soldiers that live in the Wasatch Front, and some of them come up from all over the state. You know, we, we've invested over $100 million in the last 10 years in facilities and ranges. We're currently putting up a new, it's about a $10 million live fire shooting complex that, by the way, your law enforcement officers will be able to utilize. And so we're actually one of the few states in the nation that are, that are growing in force structure. National Guards typically kind of reflect the, the citizens of the state as far as like population proportions. Because Utah's growing so fast, our National Guard, the numbers, has pretty much stayed the same for a long period of time. So now, because we always are successful in our recruiting efforts, the National Guard Bureau is looking to Utah to bring in more units. And so we're probably going to be getting an infantry battalion, which will, you know, raise our numbers a little bit. And so as we get, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to get huge, but we'll grow in proportion to our population and what we can, what we can manage. But, you know, we're still deploying people all the time. We've got soldiers in Afghanistan and other places in the Sincom area, and so it's, it's an ongoing thing. We, we have really become a, an operational force, and so Camp Williams is critical to prepare for deployments and everything else. The other thing about Camp Williams is, you know, the school that we have here. We have the Regional Training Institute. We have soldiers that come from all over the nation to, to attend certain courses, artillery, leadership courses. And so, you know, we have some state-of-the-art facilities, and it's really become kind of a gem in the National Guard, really the, the army's inventory for installations because of the facilities that we have and, and the support that we get from our local community, so.
So this A-Cub funding allows you to continue to operate without having the encroachment of, say, residential coming up and, and preventing you from maybe fulfilling some of those roles that you guys are assigned?
You know, it loosens the, it loosens the restrictions a little bit. We're still, we're still bound to be good neighbors. You know, we don't want to, you know, shoot artillery at 3:00 in the morning and wake everybody's babies up. But sometimes, sometimes we may have to do some night fire. And so we, we like to work with the communities to kind of figure out a time when, when we can do that on rare occasions, only when we need to. But we want to make sure that the public is informed, so they feel kind of a part of the process instead of, you know, being against each other. And so, you know, we still, there's still certain things that we don't do at camp because of that fact, because we're so close to population centers. Those are the kinds of things that we typically go to Dougway, or Camp Guernsey, Wyoming, or up in Idaho, where there's, you know, there's just 100,000 acres of nothing that you can kind of let loose a little bit more and take a little bit more risk. We don't take any risk at Camp Williams. When we do, like, when we do artillery shooting, it's, it's so controlled and precise that that round is going to go exactly where it's supposed to go. Dougway, you know, they can do a few things that they need to do to be a little bit more proficient, but not at camp, so.
As far as, as far as I know, and as far as, as long as I've had the opportunity to work with you guys, you guys, the, the camp has been a fantastic partner to our city, and we're grateful, I'm personally grateful to continue to work with you on these, these types of arrangements where we, we find ways to work, work together to, to accomplish your goals.
And when you come out, we'll talk a little bit more about our Wildland Fire Program. I feel like we, I feel like we're, we're hitting a very good stride on our Wildland Fire Program. I was the commander of Camp Williams when we, we changed things up and we contracted with UFA. In fact, it was the Harriman folks, Mike Yuliberry and Riley Pilgrim. We all got together and we came up with a plan, and that plan is still being refined from year to year. But we've been very successful with our livestock grazing and things like that. And so this, that's the other thing that this A-Cub program, or this concept of the Sentinel Landscape will do, is it'll help provide better, better means of, of managing wildfire, so it never gets off camp. And, you know, we don't want to talk about 2010.
Oh, no, we don't, especially Clint over here, so.
Oh, yeah. I don't even recognize you with your face mask on.
Thank God, neither.
Thank God, neither. Anybody else have any questions for the general?
Thank you.
General, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it.
Okay, we will move on to item 2.2 Stormwater Management Outreach Overview. Jonathan Bowers.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Jonathan. All righty. So last council, so up here, we talked and talked about an interlocal agreement, and what we decided to do is just take a quick step back. Jonathan, would you mind just hitting this slide for me, or do I have control? I have control, thank you. So, the interlocal agreement, maybe just starting off with it, we discussed two weeks ago, is somewhat of a moot point if we are not in the coalition. So what I thought we would do is, let's just step back and let's just talk about the coalition as it currently stands. And we, we entered into this agreement to be part of that coalition in July of 2017. And so the DEQ, as part of that, said, okay, you're taking part of the efforts that are being done by this coalition, but now what we want to do, we need to delineate what those responsibilities are, and we'll go back to that. But for now, let's, again, let's step back and talk about the benefit that comes, there will, the cost-benefit analysis that we provided as, as it pertains to the coalition. So what, and I, and I obviously, I think we, we want to know what, what it takes for us, and the exercise we went through is to figure out, what does it take for us, Harriman City, independent and alone, to meet the requirements of, I'm calling them MCM1 and MCM2. Those are the minimum control measures that we are required to meet with the state. And so that's what I'm referring to when I say MCM1 and 2. And so we worked with the communications team and came up with a, a plan. And before I get into that, I just, I, I don't know if you guys have ever seen this, and so I just thought I would just have a couple of slides on exactly what MCM1 and MCM2 is. So again, MCM1 is, as far as, is heavy on the public education and outreach requirements. So one, targeting specific pollutants and sources. Providing, then provide information to be given to the general public on the water quality impacts. We're required to provide information to, to be given to institutions, industrial and commercial facilities on water quality impacts. We are required to provide information to be given to engineers, contractors, developers concerning development of SWIP and BMPs for reducing adverse impacts of stormwater runoff. We're to provide information to be given to the MS4 engineers, development and review staff regarding low-impact development, and evaluate the effectiveness of the educational messages and overall education program. And we're going to, I'll hit on that pretty briefly on that particular one there. And then provide rationale as to why these BMPs were chosen for the public education outreach program. So that's what we're required to, that says, that is how it is stated in the permit that we are tied to with the state. And then again, so minimum control measure two- And then again, so minimum control measure two is heavy into the public involvement. And there's requirements with that again. So first one is to create opportunities for the public to provide input during this decision-making process involving development implementation and SWIP. So we're putting together LID requirements that heavily affect developers. We are putting together standards as it pertains to the SWIP. The SWIP itself is the stormwater management plan. So we're required to keep the public apprised as these documents are being approved. And then again, we're required, so number two, so the SWIP documents to be made available to the public within 120 days to the effective date of permit. A current version of the SWIP needs to remain available for public review and input for the permit and then comply with the state and local public notices when implementing a public involvement participation program. So those are the requirements as it's stated in the permit with our state. So now I'm going to jump into really the meat of what we did over these past two weeks. And I don't know the best, I hope I say this correctly. So we we kind of provided a cost of what it would take if Harriman City independently and on our own decided to fulfill the requirements of MCM1 and 2 that we otherwise would not have to if if we're with the coalition. Because there are still costs that exist whether we're with the coalition or not. These are just represented, these costs represent what we would be paying, that we would not have to pay otherwise. So the first one I'm showing up there is, I call it the Harriman City typical level of service, right? I think Harriman City Communications Team and Engineering Team, if we're putting our stamp of approval on it or at least providing a level of service that we'd like to see, it's, we owe a cost of approximately around $20,000. But if we're just looking at the bare minimum MCM requirements to fulfill that, we're looking at about $7,000, right? So those are the two levels that we could hit. And I would propose if we were to do this, I'm looking probably at that 20,000 mark, right? So we're feeling a little bit better about how we're approaching it. And we also have the comfy cozy in knowing that we're going to not just meet the requirements, but sleep a little better at night that we're not going to miss anything.
Do you think the county provides the $20,000 level of service? Or do you think they provide the $6,900 level of service?
That's a very good question. Thank you, Sheri. And if it's okay, I think that's a perfect segue into my next slide.
Did I jump ahead?
That was my question, so.
No, no, we teamed up on that before. That was perfect. I would say that they give us, they they did a, maybe even before I speak to this slide, they, they gave us a return on investment analysis that they provide to us. At least from their perspective, right? So that's why it's not in the slides. But, and they, they estimated somewhere around $60,000 annually as far as what they provide to us. Now, that's, that's what their response would be, right? My response in addition to that would be, I guess, is there's a lot of stuff that the county, well, let me back up, the state really is heading off into a direction that'll, that is difficult, I would say, to to meet in some cases in cities and developers who haven't quite caught on. Now, the state and the county are together on this. They, the county is really glued on to what the state wants to do. And so the, one of the biggest benefits, which I would think, jumping on the coalition, is that we are on that bandwagon with them for a cost of $5,300 or so. Whereas we're paying probably around $6,000 or so, right? Or excuse, yeah, yeah, somewhere around that $7,000 mark to meet the minimum. But at that 20,000 mark and maybe more, we're getting it for around that $5,300. So yes, Sheri, that was a long-winded answer and I apologize. My answer is yes, I think we get more than that $7,000 and very arguably that 20 grand as well.
Pretty concerning though, if they think they're, they're spending $60,000 and we could do it for 20, that's pretty concerning, but.
So I don't know if they're necessarily spending 60 on us. That's, that's what their analysis is for the return on the investment, but.
As as long as what you just stated is, is the case that we're getting value for what we're participating in, I think, as I rewatched the last meeting that I missed when this was discussed, at least my takeaway was the question was, is this a worthwhile partnership? There's some things we partner with the county on that are true partnerships where we get, we we give and we get in equal measure or it's equally beneficial. And there's others that were, were just kind of under the thumb a little bit. So I think that was maybe the, at least that was my concern after watching that discussion. So if the answer is that, yeah, we're getting the value plus some, I'm good with that.
Yeah, and and maybe I I would like to just point out a few intangible perhaps benefits that come. And one, I don't know if it's quite, nah, it's on that last point. It gives the engineering department who works with the county's department to rub shoulders and to make sure we're, you know, we're on board with knowing what those requirements are, the latest and greatest. And we're understanding, we're, we're making sure that we are staying in compliance with the state. The state sometimes, I don't know if the culture there moves and changes, but we would be dynamically tied to them as being part of that coalition. Now, I should say this, they have told us and invited us and said, even if you're not part of the coalition, you can attend our meetings. So they didn't say you can't attend, so I just figured I should state that. But the first one is, is a, a difficult thing to quantify would be that that consistent message of we all live downstream that we otherwise wouldn't be able to use and would be an infringement on copyright is what they stated in our conversation with them at least. And then again, the participation in the coalition which acts as an advisory panel is a recommend, is recommended MCM2. They provide a peer-to-peer resource for improving and bettering our stormwater program as part of that, as well as providing a survey to, out to the, the county at large, just kind of seeing, are we, are we making a difference? Is this helping, is it, is it not? So anyway. So obviously, the discussion points, they're obvious and maybe they're not, they kind of goes without saying is, you know, that's the key points. Are we stepping back, are we still, is this still something that we are interested in as far as staying with the coalition? And then second, if so, do we want to jump into this interlocal agreement that we talked about two weeks ago? So I just thought what I would do is just quickly just repeat what we talked about two weeks ago, and it's pretty short. So again, this interlocal agreement that I approached two weeks ago was specifically outlining the responsibilities with the county versus what the city is still responsible to do to get credit. This was, the, the state asked the county to do these interlocal agreements so that those lines were clear. And so here's the requirements, the, this would, the county would provide the co-permittee, that's us, Harriman City, identification and accountability essentially. Develop and implement a core county-wide public outreach, or excuse me, education outreach program. These are taken out of the interlocal. Develop a portion of the public involvement and participation program. And then compile and submit the state details of activities MCM1 and 2. So doing a little bit of the heavy lifting there, and then really largely Harriman City then has to provide the necessary documents to them to be able to provide that. And then again, we'd be obligated to pay, no, okay, this is not part of that, this current interlocal. We already are obligated, but the city's obligated currently to pay that around that $5,300 mark yearly, but anyway.
So in reality, we could probably do it for about the same cost on our own, but it would be this level of service versus this level. Because this $5,300, we have additional cost by doing this other stuff. So it probably pushes us up to what it would cost us to do it on our own. But again, we're getting a much more robust service with them. And that's exactly why I asked the question last time. I just want to make sure that when we're going into these interlocals, we really understand, is it really beneficial to us or should we consider something else? So I really appreciate your research on that.
You bet, and that's a, that's a good summary. Thank you, Sheri.
Thank you.
You bet, any other questions or I can help with?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan.
All right, thank you very much. We will move on to item 2.3, Discussion Regarding the Autumn Mall and Potential Public Infrastructure District and Tax Increment Funding Options for Harriman 73 Partners LLC. Chase.
John, do you need me to turn my camera on? Thank you, Mayor. So this item was requested to be on the agenda by Clint and Mayor, excuse me, Councilmember Smith and Mayor. A lot of the information that I included in my staff report was information that the council's received recently. So I don't want to reiterate all of that again unless you have specific questions about that. But really what I was intending to do was just kind of narrow down the direction received from council regarding where we're at with the Autumn Mall and receive some additional feedback about how we as staff should move forward based upon that direction. Some of the items that I did include, just for reference, were the interlocal agreement entered into between the city and the CDRA in December of 2019. That CDRA has not been funded under that interlocal agreement, but that interlocal is in place. I did also include the proposed participation agreement. And and a note on that, just so we don't get ahead of ourselves is that proposed participation agreement is actually between the CDRA and any development partners within that project area. So we really shouldn't be discussing the merits of that here today at this meeting because that wasn't properly noticed for a CDRA meeting. But I included it just for context of the overall funding and incentive options that are available to the city at this time. I also included the PID policy that was adopted at the end of May of this year by this council and the letter of intent to form a PID submitted by Harriman 73 Partners. So some of those items, again, I just included for reference just so we had an understanding of where things were at in terms of incentives that were maybe being considered for the Autumn Mall and whether they were complete, incomplete, so that staff and the development partner have some additional information and direction moving forward.
All right, thank you. So this is, I believe it's more for an opportunity for us to have a discussion about all of this. Who wants to start?
Well, I can start. I mean, I was the one that obviously first led out on trying to to get this back on for at least a discussion because I think, excuse me, I think we have, certainly we've had a developer and really a partner of ours that has expressed a desire for this process to continue and to to look at a PID for the Autumn Mall project because it's something they think is vital towards the, the success of the overall development down there. And I, I was, at least I believe that there was some level of discussion or heard that there may have been some level of discussion at the last Community Development Committee meeting as a, you know, regarding the the PID. And obviously, not all of us are able to attend that. So one, I wanted to have an opportunity to to know and to hear what the discussion was, if there was a discussion about the PID at that last Community Development Committee meeting with regards to, you know, how or may it, it may be implemented. And then, you know, obviously up to the rest of the council, potentially, based on the conversation that we have here in terms of where everyone lies on it, what, what really our goals are as a council with regards to our partnership and the work that's went into developing the Autumn Mall area and what direction we can give the development partner in that moving forward to allow this project to continue. Because I think we've done a tremendous amount of work over the last several years to get to the point to where we are now. And the question is, is now, you know, as a council, what are we willing to do to to help get this potential over the finish line to allow the the development to move forward? Or, because I think, I think we have enough challenges economically right now that are facing us to, to at least not consider all options in front of us to allow, to try and help this project to move forward. Because I think it's based on some of the other conversations we've had with Harriman 73, which the other partners in there, the, the investments that's there by them and as well as the city, the timelines that are are in place for future property takedowns. I think that that's all contingent on at least a project moving forward. And if there's, I guess, other thoughts or desires of how, how or if this project's going to move forward, then I think that all has to be considered and and at least let our partners know what those possibilities are to make a necessary planning to again, allow them to meet their obligations moving forward. And and that involves us as well. So that's the reason I asked for it to be on here for a full discussion again.
Is there anybody that was in that? One of the, one of the questions I think I heard from Councilmember Smith here was regarding the meeting that was, was held and kind of the discussion around PIDs that happened during that community development meeting. Is there anybody, anybody from the council that can give us an update on what was discussed in that meeting? Because I was not there.
Do you want to, or me?
Sure, I mean, it, the, the discussion was generally around that whether or not we should be giving direction to our partner on, if the timing is right to apply for the PID, what our position on approving that might be, that kind of a thing. It was pretty generic in terms of, because at that time, we didn't have the letter of intent or anything that we were discussing in that, that particular meeting, but.
There was no letter of intent or you didn't have it with you?
We didn't have it in that, we didn't have it in the meeting as a discussion point in the community development.
Just a question, I just want to know what you're.
We, we were told that they were ready to.
Ready to submit one.
Ready to submit one, and staff was asking whether we would direct them to do that or not.
Right, and I, and I think that.
Sorry, I, I guess I'm just a little direct, who to do what. I, I'm just a little confused right now.
They want a direction of would we, would we consider this a letter of intent if they submitted one?
Okay, and what was the direction that was given at that time?
So at that time, I think Jared and I both were in agreement here that I think we've all expressed a continued desire to, to take with our actions are requisite to support an Autumn Mall development happening. I think in that particular meeting, we, we summarize it this way. We don't want to burden a piece of property with a tax burden with the hope that it'll turn into an Autumn Mall sometime. We think that it should be appropriate to say that there is an interested party, that they've expressed some interest, we have some type of fish on the line, if you will, where the discussion of encumbering a property with a tax liability would become prudent. At this point, it did, it seemed premature. At least that's the guidance that we gave in that meeting.
We also discussed kind of the, the premise of it, right? When the PID was brought up and brought to the council of whether or not to have a policy, the, the discussion, what we were led to believe was that, look, if the council will at least put a policy in place, then that will give the developer the ammunition they need to take to the dealerships to say, no, the city will seriously consider this if you guys are going to seriously come in.
Yeah, that's the good faith step.
That was the good faith step. And then we were told in this meeting that, no, this would be the good faith step now. And we said, nah, there's a disconnect there. It was also stated that, well, this might not, this might not happen if we can't do the PID. And I said, well, that's a little disingenuous to say that they were planning on this all the way along because PIDs didn't exist when we started down this road.
Right.
Right, so we said, Steve and I were in agreement that unless you can tell us that there's auto dealerships that are ready to sign on the dotted line and that this will seal the deal, I don't think we're really interested in encumbering the property with that, especially with some of the red flags that have come up over the last six, eight months.
Yeah, the difference is like the TIF, the TIF situation is if nothing ever gets built and there's no taxes, nothing ever gets collected, right? With a PID, that's a, you know, in perpetuity tax liability on, on property. Whether or not anything gets built, the tax is already going to be there.
And in this case, this, I mean, worst case scenario, the city ends up fulfilling the rest of these contracts and purchasing the property and owning it, and then it would be encumbered and we'd have to sell it at a steep discount. There's a significant risk to the city.
That, that's fair.
I guess, first a comment and then a, a follow-up question. I, I think back to the discussion you guys had around it that day. The first comment is, is I guess I, I had a little bit different understanding of putting the policy in place and what that meant moving forward. My understanding was is that putting the policy in place would then allow basically the letter of intent to be submitted and that we were willing to entertain the letter of intent and, and the possibility of putting that in place to allow the project to go forward. So again, that's just my own, own understanding. I didn't have the same, I guess, the same understanding that it, that that was the, the good faith step. That was a necessary step in order to get to the letter of intent and the consideration of it. So that was from my perspective. The follow-up question to that is, is then, I guess, hearing, hearing, you know, from Jared and Steve, you, both of you in the meeting and at least your opinions on it, what direction was actually given? to the applicant at that time in terms of understanding you guys felt like it was premature, was there actual direction given to the applicant at that time in terms of what to do next?
Yeah, but I, I didn't give them specific direction other than I said, my position would be that if I received a request or an application right now for a PID, I would decline it.
I was.
It's premature, so I, I won't prevent them from doing that. I don't want to waste their time, though.
I'll tell you, my recollection of that was I was specifically asked to speak for the council and I specifically said, no, I cannot do so. I can only speak for me and this would be my answer.
Because I think that's, I think that's a very important piece of all of this is that the committee is certainly there to, to discuss the, the projects and some of the, because it came down to obviously the, the word negotiation that was used previously and why council was permitted to be in, in those committee meetings and to be part of it because the, the council was certainly told that they, they aren't in a position and should not be negotiating. And I think that's why that took that in there. But at the same time, I want to make sure that we're very careful, whether it's this committee, whether it's the audit committee that Sharon and I sit on, whatever committee it is, that, that whoever it is that's sitting in there is not doing just that and not speaking for the council.
That was very clear.
Obviously.
We say that phrase a lot in that meeting.
Because again, I think, I think it's good, obviously, for the feedback to be heard by the, the applicants of those that are in there, but it certainly can send a, set a tone. I think in terms of how they choose to move forward at that, at that point, knowing whether or not at least the, those that were participating in that committee, the, whether they felt like they were in favor or not. But again, I, I think we just need to be very careful, obviously, in how we approach that and the, the opinions because again, it's, it's meant really as a, just an informational process at that point and not a decision-making process.
So if I can jump in here, going back to the actual PID itself and, and part of that conversation that we're having. I think I, I think I recall maybe slightly differently than you, Councilman Smith, in regards to putting a policy in place. I think a lot of the discussion around the policy was, you know, or was, if we put this policy in place, we're going to, we're taking that step. That's what, you know, these, these companies do want to see to say that, you know, the Harriman is being a willing partner and we're going to give that opportunity. I don't think that we ever said that we would, you know, approve a PID. I don't think anybody on this, on this council said that.
I certainly.
Flat out, I think we were all very clear.
I certainly agree with that.
At the same time, I do think that there might have, you know, I, I think that by having a policy in place, we've also indicated that we're willing to consider, which was, I think, what we all said. I, I think somewhere in the, I, I feel like I'm somewhere in the middle here where I feel like we have put a policy in place to allow a applicant to apply for a PID. I think that there are some realistic concerns about encumbering a property long term. However, I also have, you know, if, if the landowner wants to encumber a property, landowner can encumber a property. Now, it is slightly different in this particular project because the city is involved. I'd like to ask the council if they want to hear from the applicant in this case. Do we want to have a discussion with the applicant right now or do we? We don't, do not normally do that in these work meetings, but I think it might be if the council wants to kind of see what the plan of the applicant is with the current information so that we can all be on the same page. Is that something that the council would like to do at this time?
For me, the only way that I want to spend more time discussing it is if you can tell me that there is an auto, an actual auto dealership that is willing to sign on the dotted line.
Well, and I, I think that that's an unreasonable request because that's playing a hand that I don't think is appropriate for us to, to ask in, in a public setting, so.
I think.
I'd say even if there was a letter of intent or, or a memorandum of understanding that there's an actual auto dealership that wants to come in, yeah, I think we can advance the conversation more, but I think that, you know, the, the real reluctance about approving the PID policy in the first place was saying, we don't necessarily want to invite an application right now, but we also don't want to undermine our partner's efforts to try and go out and put, put a deal together. I, I still think I'm in that same position where I want to support a deal done. And if, if a PID is necessary to get a deal done, let's, let's have that conversation. Let's, let's get going on that.
I kind of feel like.
But, but right now, I think a PID is like, well, we want.
We hope this will help there be a deal.
Maybe this could help possibly someday get something is not a strategy that I'm willing to entertain for, for approving a PID.
Jerry?
I just, and I appreciate that that's like, that the partner is here and I appreciate that, but I don't think it's the time. I, I believe there's a process. If somebody wants to come before us and, and speak, then you put in an application. If that's really what they want to do, they can walk down the path of petitioning for that. I, I'm of the same mind. I, I have no intention of, my, my thought would be, no, I don't want to encumber the land with that, with those kind of burdens also. There are certainly ways to work out real estate deals. If there's somebody that wants to purchase the land, have it be contingent upon a PID being approved. Those things are easily worked out through contracts and negotiation with people, potential buyers. And then we have the conversation. It comes before the council and we make a decision on that, but I just, I just feel like it's premature right now. I just, I appreciate that, that it was discussed, appreciate that kind of wanting to get a feel because it costs money to put in applications. I understand that. But, but at, at this point, I think that it's pretty clear that, that we need to maybe get a little further down the road before we consider that.
I think that's pretty much what we said in the committee meeting was, look, if they're just looking for a direction of whether to submit a real application and go through the process, here's our opinion, right? But if they want to go through the process and go for the council, then go for it.
I think, I don't know, I guess, obviously, I think I have maybe just a little bit different view on it, only in that I absolutely agree with everything that's been said in terms of, you know, future encumbrances on the land and the taxes that go with it. I don't think any of us are in a position to, that that's something that we would like to do. I think my, my view is really it's kind of a chicken and the egg scenario, right? Which came first, the chicken or the egg? And, and I think that's kind of how I'm viewing this a little bit is it feels like it's a little bit of that catch-22 scenario in having one to help lure in or at least potentially lure in a partner to, to take that initial step because we have that in place and we have that, that commitment there and not have it in place and having that uncertainty by that person being willing to take the step. And so that's what I'm really trying to, to figure out, the best way to, to balance that because I don't, all to speak for me, but I, I would hope it's the same sentiment across the council and that is, is that we want this project to succeed. The question then for me comes down to what am I potentially willing to, to do to, to help that succeed? Because we, again, we've put so much work and so much effort into it. I, having concerns, all valid concerns that have been raised and I agree with here. Again, is it a risk that I potentially am willing to take to, knowing that it could mean the success of the property versus not taking the risk and potentially meaning, okay, we don't get anybody to bite on it. Now what is the plan moving forward for that property? Because it certainly can't just sit in perpetuity. So that, that's kind of where I'm at and why I wanted honestly to have the discussion because I think that that's a valid, for me, we'd have to ask the, the the partner or Harriman 73 partners, their opinion on that to know, but at least that's a little bit of the sense I'm getting is, is we, we are in a challenging spot. We're in a very challenging spot and the economy and the pandemic and all of those things aren't helping it. So what, again, what are we willing to do to help this succeed? And what risks are we willing to take and potentially not have it succeed? And what does that potentially now turn into in the future? Because again, again, we can't and we can't expect them to just landbank this waiting for that, that perfect time. That there's just timelines in place for all of us that that, that isn't a plausible scenario. So how do we, how do we get past that and make it something that's productive for us? And that's really where I'm coming from on it.
I think that's a, a great point, Clint, that we all want this to succeed, right? And I think we talked about that a little bit, but at what cost, right? Where, for, for me, the answer to that is it, it's not at any cost, right? That like we, for, for me, the cost is what we agreed to originally. And that was a, that was a tough, I don't know about you guys, but that was a tough decision for me to say, yeah, we'll commit city funds to buy this property if they don't fulfill their end. And that's where we started out was these guys are just going to buy the property and, and we're going to be a partner in buying the property to try to get this auto thing to go through. And I've looked back at the minutes from those meetings. I think I was pretty clear in saying, that's a big if, right? There's a lot of things that have to get done to try to get auto here, including legislation, right, at the state level and a whole list of things. Our commitment was, was the land. That, and, and that's it. And then we talked about, and Chase, please interrupt me if I, if I stray.
Like, be careful, I, I want to make sure.
On the CDRA thing, but my understanding at that time, the 70% and where we got stuck in some of those discussions is that that's, that's sales tax incentive to the dealerships that they would need. That's what our, our conversations were structured around is that that's what the dealerships will want. It's not, it was not to incentivize or help the, the land purchases. And that's where we kind of got stuck on this participation agreement was it was just giving all of that money to the land developer and then they'll divvy it out. And, and we said, no, we're not okay with that.
I think the only, I, I absolutely agree with everything you said, Jared. I, nothing I can argue against there. I think the only thing that I would add to that is that I think, I think the, obviously, some of the, I'm not even going to say parameters. We've had some changes because of the pandemic that of course have affected a lot of different things through, through the process and has probably slowed down in the fact that we've come back and talked about some of those timeline, those takedown timelines and those types of things. And so knowing what, what the original conversations were, absolutely agree with you there. Again, I just think we have to be fluid and make our decisions based on current, current situations, knowing that they may have a different effects moving forward than we had six or eight months ago.
So I'm going to look at our city attorney. So, and you may not have the answer. I don't expect you to necessarily have the answer right at this moment. What I would like is maybe a memo on, how do I say this? If, let's say we were to approve a PID and the auto mall came through, what would be our options? Would we be able to remove the PID? Would we be able to, you know, what are those options to remove that encumbrance from the land? Is that something that we can put in a contract? Is that, I mean, what are those options? I know this is a new law and policy and I don't expect you to necessarily have an answer right now, but I would maybe like some more further information on that to, to know if, hey, we have the ability to pull that back later. Okay, well then let's pull it, let's, maybe I'm a little bit more willing to look at it. If we don't and once it's encumbered, it's truly encumbered, well, that does, that's definitely a different conversation. And so I would like your opinion on maybe what are some of those options to be provided to this council so that we can maybe have further discussion down the road on, on what that, what those options might be.
I think there's another, there's a consequence to this that is most concerning to me. And this is the idea that if we were to approve a PID and they have 6.7 million, is that what it is, in infrastructure that they want to do? So they can go out and bond for that 6.7 million plus, you know, interest fees, whatever. This could be an $8 million bond or so. That will be paid back by the mill rate revenue on those properties, right? Well, the problem is if we don't develop those properties, they never happen, the bond doesn't get paid back, the bond goes into default, the bond issuer forecloses on the property.
Right.
And we potentially lose a property that we have ownership in.
You have to pay the bond.
If we don't pay the bond, that's what I'm trying to figure out. So Larry, you, you seem to have an, a, an opinion that that's an incorrect interpretation there?
Are you, are you suggesting that we invite the applicant up to speak?
Well, I'm trying to figure out if, if I have a, a liability on my property and I don't pay it, there's a consequence for not paying it.
There's always a consequence.
The only security for a PID is the property tax from the area. Yeah, once, once they.
Yeah, but that's not the security for the bond.
That, that is the security for the bond. It's the property tax collected from the.
If there's no property tax collected, the bond just is free and clear?
That's the risk that the bond
Yeah, that, the risk is really on the bond company, correct? And that was my understanding as well.
Like a special assessment area, if no assessments collected or paid, they, that's the only security for a special assessment area is the assessment that's collected.
I'd have to get some more information on that because I'd, I'd like to understand how long then the bondholder can keep that debt collecting and assuming interest.
The maximum is 40 years by statute.
Yeah.
Forty.
Forty years.
Four years would be a.
So.
So Steve from like an investment.
An $8 million liability that could accrue against that property for 40 years if it doesn't get developed.
Which goes back to my point of, right, if, if, if this doesn't work out, right, we're the ones holding the bag. And we've used taxpayer money to purchase the property that then has to be severely discounted to offset that encumbrance. Like that's, that's the issue.
I guess that's not my understanding. And what I do need is I need, I need clarification of that understanding is what I need.
No, so. Prepare that memo may help answer some of those questions.
That's, that's exactly what I'm looking for.
To try to put it simply, if the difference.
You try to put this simply.
The difference is that the bonding agency is not going to foreclose on the property, but they have rights to the tax revenue from that property. No one is going to buy that property from us without a significant discount to offset that encumbrance.
Because it's a tax lien, right?
So it's not that they're, not that they're going to take the property from us, but we will not be able to sell it.
Do you have any questions as to what information we're looking for?
I'll be very broad. I'll try to cover as much as I can and.
I, I appreciate it.
Well, I want to circle back to Clint's point though, because I agree with him that, you know, we, like we've said all along, we, we want this to work. We want to work with our partners and I think we've been doing that, like we've, we've done what we can. I don't know if I'm going out of turn, some of the things have been discussed in closed door, but rearranging some of the financial arrangements for them to be more flexible. And I'm uneasy about those things, right? Those red flags that I mentioned that come along and we're, we, I think we've bent over backwards to try to be flexible to help them through this uncertain time. And, and we'll continue to look at creative ways to do that. But, but for me at least, that like going forward with the PID at this point is extremely premature.
So your opinion is not that you're not willing to consider a PID, it's just not at this time without further information from the partner regarding specifics on what the future plans are. I would say that now is, a public meeting would not be an appropriate place for him to provide us with those additional details because negotiations and contracts are on property or should be held in those closed sessions.
Well, I would just ask if the, the council is amenable as, as we've asked for some of that information from, from Chase, that we allow the partner in this with us to help provide some of that information and clarification because they're, they are the ones that are in actively doing those negotiations. And I think that some of the, maybe those finer details without obviously disclosing confidential stuff, that that could be important and germane to the conversation.
I would please have you work with the partner to get any information needed to address these concerns.
If, if I might just ask for a brief sidebar moment of privilege here. I had actually recommended to Wendy in a meeting before this that as an additional agenda item on the 18th, that we have a review of applicants' participations in our work meetings and whether or not they should make presentations, how long those should be, what that format should be, that kind of a thing. And so if there's anybody who would second that being on the agenda, I would just, this is exactly the reason why I think we need clarification about that policy.
So just what our process and policy, what, what our practice is?
Our practice has been, we don't allow applicants to speak unless there's a specific invitation or something. So I, I would just like us to maybe revisit that. I think recent, recent actions have led us to believe that it might behoove us to consider under the circum, better define the circumstances under which we'd want an applicant to make a presentation to us so that we're not meeting onesie twosies, you know, and having something like that.
The intent was so that this discussion doesn't get derailed and the council has a chance to counsel and work together.
Because we were having issues.
So sorry for the sidebar, but thank you.
Just one other thing, I think it's just fair to note as we talk about PIDs is that it is probably very, very likely we will see additional legislation this year as it relates to PIDs. That's.
It's on Tammy's list.
It's been, and it's been part of several of the discussions in the other legislative meetings that I've been in, especially with the league. It's, it's a issue that they're focused on as well.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is if, if the legislation as it's currently written, it gets approved, we will have no say over a PID as a local municipality.
In this case, we're a property owner and we can say no.
That'd be the only option.
Well, which is the only, only reason we might say no. I wouldn't want to necessarily say no to somebody else's personal property, but, but we, we have committed a lot. Committed a lot of our taxpayer money, and so. Maybe even in my own life, I might run the risk or, or gamble on the, on the investment or decide that, but I won't do that with taxpayer money.
Good point. One other item, if I may, Mayor, so based upon this conversation, I would just make a recommendation that this council look at the policy. Because I, it's my opinion that the policy as written. Requires the Community Development Committee to provide feedback on the letter of intent, in fact, it states that. They will use the policy. To determine whether the letter of intent. Or rather, they, they will look at the policy, the letter of intent to see if it lines up with the policy as written, and then the Community Develop, Development Committee makes a recommendation. Whether to prepare a governing document if it does line up, and if it doesn't, to make the necessary changes. So, I, I would maybe based upon this conversation either make some changes to that policy or maybe even change who the governing or reviewing body is. Right, it might be appropriate for this body to be the reviewing.
It was my understanding that we, it was a recommendation, but it was not a decision, that that decision still had to come from this body.
It, it does say. We utilize these criteria to determine whether or not to direct the applicant to proceed with preparation of the draft governing document, so as it's written, the yes or no stage really. Is the governing document stage, when a governing document is submitted.
To be fair, we didn't have that conversation.
And that's true.
We, we didn't review and say, does this pass muster or not?
And that was my fault, I think. Really, that, that's on the applicant, right, they can submit the, they can submit it and then the appropriate body. And they have submitted a letter of intent. Their, their question was, should we submit it? And, and I apologize if that was the understanding at that meeting, because I, I, I did have a copy of the letter of intent and sent it to the, and I see that, I've seen that in the, in your report here, but. We didn't have in our community development reading a review of this letter of intent as it relates to the policy, whether or not it met policy. You know, I've looked at it and I think it largely does, I, I have a couple of specific questions, but. Yeah, it fulfills a policy, whether or not we should direct them to move forward with governing documents, if that's the next question is, well. They're, they're more than welcome to take that step, I think, I mean, assuming the. Committee approves that, the, the letter of intent there, but. I didn't want to encourage the applicant to go through that additional step, pay the fees, do anything if we weren't really supportive of that idea, so. I, I think there were two pieces of direction, one was, is this, does this meet the criteria, we didn't make that decision. Should they proceed, we did give some guidance, at least our opinions on that, so.
I think that Harriman 73 Partners just has a few people that are on that side, but on this side, we have about 50,000 people that are part of this partnership, so it makes these decisions a lot more complex.
Okay. To your, to your point, Chase, I think that's appropriate for us to visit that as well and make sure that we're all comfortable with what that process is.
Cause it was my understanding that we were still the deciding body, and so if that is not.
For the governing document, that is correct, under our policy, the city council is, and by statute, the city council is the deciding body for the governing document. The way we drafted our policy is the Community Development Committee reviews the letter of intent and then instructs the applicant whether or not to prepare the governing document for submission to the city council for review.
Any further discussion on this item?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, we will move on to item 2.4, discussion of Athos Academy conduit bond proposal, Alan Ray.
This past week, we had a request from the attorneys representing Athos Academy. To see if the city would be willing to act as a conduit bonding agency for Athos to. Get a bond. There are some improvements they wanna do with it, but basically it is to pay off the developer that built the building. They, their biggest cost right now is paying a lease payment on the building, so they're wanting to go out and get a debt, a bond. That would lower their lease payment. They have been turned down by the Utah Charter School Finance Agency.
Do we know the reason they were turned down?
They were turned down for what was called.